Okay, I forgot to tell the mayor how to start it out.
Oh, I see.
Okay, for the meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, 7:00 p.m., the regular meeting will now come to order. Okay?
Okay. The end vacation will be led by Pastor and West Covina Police Chaplain Kelly Dupé.
All rise, please.
All rise, please.
Blessing of living and working in the great city of West Covina. Thank you, God, that you are with us and watching over us, and, Lord, thank you for all that you've placed in leadership over our city, God. We thank you, Lord, for the City Council and for, Lord, those who are serving us right now as we speak in our police and fire departments. God, we just pray that you would be with all of them, Lord, keep them safe, and bless those who are out there serving us tonight. God as well, Lord. I pray your blessing be upon this meeting, Lord, that you would be with the City Council and their deliberations and the decisions that they make, Lord, for our good. So, God, we commit this evening to you and pray for wisdom, we pray for the guidance of the Holy Spirit, and we thank you once again, Lord, for your blessing upon our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Jessica C. Shoemaker.
Please remain standing and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney, anything to report out of the closed session?
I do have one item to report. The City Council directed that the City Attorney inform the public of the following. On a four-to-one vote, with Mayor Johnson voting no, the City Council voted to direct the City Attorney to draft, negotiate, and finalize a separation agreement between the city of West Covina and Chris Freeland, West Covina's current city manager, such that Mr. Freeland's last day of work with the city would be today, March 5th, 2019. The City Attorney was directed to prepare the severance agreement in a manner consistent with the city's contractual obligations to Mr. Freeland under the existing employment contract. When the agreement is finalized, it will be made available for public review upon request. Mr. Freeland leaves the city of West Covina with over eighteen years' experience serving as city manager since September 2015. During his tenure, Mr. Freeland held various roles with the city, including management analyst, too, assistant to the city manager, deputy city manager, human resources director, community services director, community and economic development director, and assistant city manager. The City Council unanimously agreed to the following. We thank Chris Freeland for his many years of service to the city of West Covina and to wish him success in his future endeavors. We hope and expect that the next city manager will be able to build upon what has been built during Chris's tenure and to make West Covina an even better place than it is now. That concludes my report.
City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Item number three, minor changes to the ordinance with legal language. Copies are available with the Assistant City Clerk and have been provided to the Council.
And at this time, we have presentations for recognition of bravery presented to Pete Aguilar of the West Covina Fire Department and wife Priscilla Aguilar.
Okay, you'll go down with it.
Fire Chief, please come down.
Well, I guess it's Student Government Day, I guess you get to do the speech, so I'll just hand it over to you. I prepared you some notes here. Now, can I get Peter Aguilar and his wife, Priscilla, to join us, please? So Peter is a firefighter paramedic with the city of West Covina, and his wife, Priscilla, is a registered nurse for Inter-Community Hospital? Okay, great. In the very early mornings of Sunday, February 17th, Priscilla and Peter came upon a horrific traffic accident, one in which people were trapped and entangled, vehicles overturned, at least one vehicle that was on fire, and unfortunately claimed four lives. Without hesitation, both Peter and Priscilla put themselves in harm's way and took immediate action. They relied upon their training, rose to the occasion, and initiated triage and treatment, pulling one patient from the wreckage, rendering aid to one of the individuals who was still entangled in the vehicle, putting out a vehicle fire with solely extinguisher, all done prior to emergency responders arriving on scene. It is truly amazing what both Peter and Priscilla were able and willing to do and accomplish prior to the fire department and the police and rescue ambulances arriving on scene. They both represented their respective disciplines admirably. As a chief, I'm grateful and thankful for not only what you guys do while you're on duty, but more importantly, what you're willing to do in grave danger while you're off duty. So please join me in recognizing both Peter and Priscilla for their efforts and their courage to act, and congratulating them on a job well done. These are times when it's an honor to be up here to say thank you to two gracious and honorable people that you could have drove right on by, but that wasn't with who you are. As one of our finest fire department and, I guess, a beautiful, wonderful wife who is also a nurse, you guys know what you're doing, and you took it upon yourself to say, "No, we're not passing, we're going to do what we have to do." So as the City Council, we have a couple certificates we'd like to give you, then we want you guys to say something afterwards. Will you come over in the center, please? Come on over here. Peter, please. Okay, this is our student mayor for today. He's the one that's going to read the certificate for you.
The city of West Covina presents the certificate of recognition to Peter Aguilar for his outstanding bravery and self-sacrifice while off duty in the city of Santa Ana as a firefighter and paramedic. The city of West Covina presents the certificate recognition for Priscilla Aguilar for outstanding bravery and self-sacrifice while off duty in the city of Santa Ana as a registered nurse.
Say something, please. We're going to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. Definitely thank you as a resident, former resident, over twenty years here in the city of West Covina. I grew up in the schools here, product of the Explorer program. I'd like to personally thank everybody in the West Covina Fire Department for helping shape the person that I am today. Without them, I wouldn't have been able to do what I do today. So, thank you so much for honoring us, and thank my wife for being there and supporting me, and, you know, everything she did that night. She was the true hero that night, and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say something?
I just, no.
Please say something.
No, I just wanted to, I appreciate this. Honestly, it was, you just did it. But thank you.
You're very welcome. Let's get a picture. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to have our Assistant City Manager, please come down, and she can do it for us. Uh-oh.
We would like to thank all the high schools that participated today, and hopefully they learned something, I hope. All of you got a little glimpse of the local government. Like to thank the Kiwanis Club of West Covina, and at this time, I'd like to ask President Jeffrey Chu and Brad Manning to come down, if you're hiding some. Brad's not here. Brad's so used to this, right? You get to do the honors. I'd also like to call down West Covina High School Assistant Principal, Dr. David Rinkowitz. West Covina High School Activities Director, Melanie Wong. Edgewood Principal, Dr. Maddox. I didn't see Ronnie. South Hills High School Dean of Students, Cedar Rampershead. And do we have a representative from Coronado that was able to make it? No? Okay. Well, thank you to those of you who are here for allowing us to spend some time with your students today, and we did get a lot of good information. I want to let you know that we had a really interactive lunch discussion and topic, and they gave us a lot of good ideas for youth programs and events, and some of those things we actually foresee implementing in the future. So it was a really positive day, and we hope that we can continue this partnership with the help of the Kiwanis Club, and I believe we have some certificates. Oh, we got them right there? Okay. And we are going to call some students down, and we're going to call them in order of, how they're highlighted on my sheet, so let's hope they're all in order, right? And they're not in order from there, so see, look at that. Gio Gina from South Hills High School.
Gio.
Natalie Hauser.
Yay!
Alyssa Calderon from South Hills High. She's our HR director, he's making her work. And we have Emma Delgado from South Hills High. Carlos Acosta, West Covina High School. Yusef Arifin from West Covina High School, I hope I said that right.
You did.
Ariana Escobedo from West Covina High. She's a fire chief, right? Emily Bania from West Covina High School. Kind Two from West Covina High School. Isabella Acosta from Edgewood High. Brian Atividad from Edgewood High. Shiraz Sadar Christian, Edgewood High. Okay, so again, we'd just like to thank everybody, and I would also like to take this time to thank the staff that dedicated their day to the students, and we hope to do this again next year with all your support, so thank you very much. We'll get a group picture.
Can I get my Kiwanians up here? Can I get all the Kiwanians up here? I don't do this alone, I serve at their pleasure, so anyone that's in, all my Kiwanians, please, please come in and get them this group photo. Join us, this is not, it's not a one-man band, this is a many, many people band.
your lovely wife, please come down. Fire Chief, you still up there? How did he take off? Nah, we can do it without him. I do apologize, they were down there, I didn't see them. Okay, we're going to start reading one at a time.
The State of California Senate presents the certificate of recognition presented to Pete Aguilar in honor of being recognized for bravery by the city of West Covina. I hope you have great success in all of your future endeavors.
Where was it from?
From California State Senator Ling Ling Ching. The State of California Senate presents the certificate of recognition to Priscilla Aguilar in honor of being recognized for bravery by the city of West Covina. I hope you have great success in all of your future endeavors, presented by California State Senator Ling Ling Ching.
Let's get a couple pictures, you guys. I'm looking at a field picture. Thank you.
Clerk, you may come up and speak.
I should call him.
Priscilla Colton.
I'd like to call first Phil Kaufman, followed by Heidi Freeman, followed by Renee Chavez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Council, Council, Staff, Staff. I first brought this matter up, well, this is regarding Agenda Item Five, the approval of the amendment to the MV transportation contract. I first brought this matter up a year, year and a half ago, and the response at the time was to wait until the contract comes up again for consideration and renewal to voice this issue, and that is the transit services provided by the company for the shuttle charges $1 per person per ride, and there are no discounts regardless of the status of anyone who may wish to use the shuttle. It's only a dollar, and people think, "Well, it's only a dollar," but for seniors and disabled people on a fixed income, that can be a major stumbling block to them being able to get out of the house, go to the grocery, go get something to eat, or to the senior center. And in canvassing other shuttle services and public transportation in the area, we're virtually the only, well, actually, one of only two services in the entire area that doesn't provide a discount for seniors, disabled, and the like. La Puente only charges 50 cents a ride for regular unaffected citizens, but they do have a discount of only 25 cents for seniors and for disabled. Baldwin Park charges the same dollar that West Covina does, but they have a reduced fee of 50 cents for seniors and for disabled. Landora charges a dollar like we do, but they only charge 75 cents for students and 50 cents for seniors and for disabled. Foothill Transit, a senior riding Foothill Transit can ride, instead of whatever it is, $1.50, $1.75, can ride any Foothill Transit line for 50 cents. The Gold Line, the Gold Line charges $1.75 to the average rider, but a senior under peak times only has to pay 75 cents, and under their, what they consider non-peak hours, which are nine in the morning until three in the afternoon, and seven in the evening until five in the morning, five days a week, the fare to go as far as the line goes from Irwindale to downtown Los Angeles is 35 cents. I think this is something that we need to consider, and in renewing the transit contract is something that the citizens of this community needs. A senior who wants to go to lunch at the senior center each weekday would be paying more for transportation to go and to come than they're paying for lunch, and that $40 transportation cost may mean the difference whether or not they get there and have maybe their only real meal of the day. So I think it's something that we have to, as a community, to consider, and it should be part of any new contract negotiations. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Freeman. My husband and I are thirty-year residents of West Covina. I'll start by thanking the Council for voting to prepare a request for a proposal, also known as an RFP, for the BKK landfill site. That's a first step. Now the focus must turn toward preparing and ensuring the RFP process is conducted through a complete, fair, and transparent process. What does that mean? Complete means that all reasonable efforts are made to understand the residents' needs and desires and to reach out to potentially interested parties. While two community workshops were conducted, our input was restricted to the 50 acres on top of the Class III landfill, and expressly excluded input on the 122 acres of the city-owned land. Residents' requirement for that 122 acres should be gathered and included in the RFP. The exclusive negotiation agreement, though lapsed, and acceptance of multiple proposals from Singpoli sent a strong message to the business and environmental communities that the city has a frontrunner, if not an already chosen respondent. The city needs to widely advertise and market the RFP and contact potentially interested parties, not just post an RFP on a website so that it can claim to have met the residents' request for an RFP. Fair. Fair means that RFP is written in time so that Singpoli, who has been working on their plan for years, is not unduly advantaged. This means that all information the city has provided to Singpoli is provided to all parties, and that the timeline is adequate to allow other interested parties to provide a complete and thorough response. Fair also means that all decisions are based on a set of objective criteria created at the time the RFP is written that is based on resident input, the particulars of the site, it is an enormous toxic landfill after all, as well as economics. We cannot have decisions based on opinions or outside influence. Transparent means that residents are involved at all steps. Residents have access to all information short of sensitive financial proprietary data and be included in decisions. Again, complete, fair, and transparent. Unfortunately, fair is already questionable. In an article published in the World Journal on February 27th, Mayor Pro Tem Wu is quoted that the city intends to build a large-scale ecological leisure park, including the construction of a five-star hotel and large-scale exhibit center. While I'm hopeful that the interview with Mr. Wu was conducted prior to the decision to prepare an RFP and does not show that he is just going through the motions with the RFP, the article brings to the forefront a very important point. We residents expect and demand that our city staff, and even more importantly, our City Council act with integrity. The city has an obligation to ensure that the BKK RFP is completed through a complete, open, and transparent process. Political and personal aspirations have no place in the processes and decisions surrounding the landfill. Thank you.
After our next speaker, Renee Chavez, I'd like to call up Carlin Acosta, followed by Giselle Sorkal. You can line up in the middle, please.
Good evening, my name is Renee Chavez, and I am a new resident to the city of West Covina, Saturday as a matter of fact. I've been looking for a place to live, and I decided I wanted to live and work in the same city, here at West Covina. I'm here to discuss or put out for the public, so for them to understand that what happened today at closed session, basically the removal of our city manager, Chris Freeland, at the direction of the new City Council under the guise of performance evaluation. I personally come from the city of Los Angeles, Council District 14, which is currently under plague and being watched by the FBI for various crimes that we'll be finding out about very soon, I'm sure, but my challenge is, I was very excited about the idea of moving to the city of West Covina during a time when we would have a new City Council. I was looking forward to starting a new slate. Unfortunately, I believe the decision of the City Council is incorrect and really premature. The prior City Council had actually ratified a new contract, which would end in February of 2020, which would give the new members, of which have only been here at the most three months, giving you folks time to actually learn about the city and what it does and what department heads do, and really the entire process. I think today's decision was unfortunate because you've actually eliminated the one employee in the city of West Covina that has the most experience, eighteen years as a full-time employee and prior to that as an intern. It's an unfortunate thing that you folks have done, and I just wanted to let the public know, and I hope you really do better in future, because today really was not your best moment. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and City Council. My name is Giselle Soriel, and I'm here on behalf of the Office of Senator Susan Rubio, and I'm here to invite you all, and especially the young ladies that are sitting next to you and are participating in the government program today, to our Wings Conference. Wings stands for Women Inspiring the Next Generation of Sisterhood. It's going to be a fantastic conference taking place in your next-door neighbor city at Baldwin Park. There's going to be a financial literacy etiquette class, a discussion around healthy relationships, as well as do's and don'ts for social media. It's going to be a pretty solid day, and you get to have the two sisters, first ever elected to the state legislature there, to speak to you, guide you, have a little photo op. It's going to be a really fun day, and I would encourage you all to come and join us, and especially, and please RSVP, and let your friends know. So I'm going to leave some of these flyers right here, and I'd love it if you grabbed them and share them with your friends, okay? Because we are looking to encourage you, inspire you, and ensure that you all are empowered and can grow up to be, you know, the heroes that we all need, and the heroes that we really do need in the future, okay? Thank you.
After our next speaker, Carlin Acosta, I'd like to call it Francois Colton, followed by Alyssa Calderon, and that is our last speaker for this evening. Carlin Acosta?
Oh, it's Carlos.
Oh.
So, quite simply, on the behalf of West Covina High School, I would just like to thank you all for this grand opportunity, being able to, activities ranging from being locked in a jail cell to being able to run our own government, it was beyond phenomenal. I'd like to thank you, Lloyd Johnson, for being able to guide me and show me how it works. works. But thank you to all, thank you to Kewanee for holding this event, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay, mayor, council members, staff, and community, I would just like to thank you guys very much for giving the opportunity for teens and participants in AEB from each school to participate in the Student Government Day. It's really been an eye-opener and such a blessing to be a part of this program and community. And it's just gaining experiences and skills that we're going to need in our lives, and just gaining the knowledge from each job. Like, thank you to the fire chief and assistant fire chief for taking me and kind around and just gaining information on what they do and what goes into their lives every day. It's just so important that our society and teens in our society start getting the background knowledge of politics and government, so like, we could be the next people that we're going to be the ones to vote, we're going to be potentially council members too, like we was brushed up on. And it's just so important that we're gaining this now as teenagers in high school, that we're going to need these experiences and knowledge for the rest of our lives. So thank you for giving the time and spending your day with us and just helping us with our futures in the next coming years. So thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Francois Colton. I'm about a three-year resident in West Covina. It's just come to my attention, and I've been hearing a little bit more about it over the last few months, about the BKK, that that even exists, which was a total shock to me, and more shocking to the fact that I'm new, is that many long-term residents don't have a clue about it either. And I can't stress enough how important it is to disclose, 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 share that information with the residents. It's absolutely unconscionable for you guys to even move forward with something like this without the residents even knowing anything about it. It seems to me as though there's some extra, I don't know, power struggles of some kind, PC contests, I hate to say that, but it's totally wrong to be doing this type of thing. And I can't stress how important it is for each of you to really make sure that the residents are totally aware of this, and it shouldn't be rushed through. It should take years, just like it took years for that dump to become the most toxic in this area, in this country, in the world, you know? So again, although I like living in West Covina, learning about how this has been handled, and that there's even discussion, and now there's this RFP out there, I feel that we shouldn't even be dealing with this type of thing. We should build on it so that people, not build on it, but we should allow conservation. Take advantage of the space, the green space we have, and let the residents use it. And I'm sure if you talk to residents, that's what they would tell you. So again, you need to speak with the residents, and you need to make sure that they're totally aware of what's going on, because it's really, I feel like it's a lie to try to pass something like this by without having full ownership of all the residents. Thank you very much.
We have no more speakers at this time?
I usually let the mayor do this, but first of all, I want to ask, we'll ask the city manager if she has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one to the last speaker. The comment was made that there is, an RFP is out there. I do want to let the public know that the RFP is actually coming back before council, so the scope of work is being designed. Council will be voting on that item at the March 19th council meeting, that is the plan. So there is no RFP out in the free world, that will be coming before the public, and that's it.
Well, next, we usually have the consent calendar, but before we move that, I do have one adjournment motion I would like to read off tonight. It's basically, it's a bio of this wonderful man that was a resident for West Covina for over 50 years. It's been said that one of the greatest ways of expressing caring and support for others is to say, "Say it with flowers." Mario Del Fonti had expressed his compassion, generosity, and community support with flowers during his entire career. Mario, whose father was a florist, said he managed to stay out of trouble while growing up in Lincoln Heights because his father put him to work. In fact, he made his first corsage when he was eight years old, and he made flowers delivered for his father during his childhoods. His youthful training as a florist not only kept him out of trouble, it also enabled his successful career and his numerous community contributions, saying it with flowers as an adult. Mario had owned a florist business in the city of West Covina for over 50 years. During those many years, he had contributed to residents of West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley through services and financial donations. His efforts supported a broad spectrum of community needs relating to health, education, domestic violence, youth, seniors, and national awareness of the city of West Covina. As an active member of the West Covina Lions Club for over 50 years, Mario had supported numerous club services activities, including the Lions' annual Free Eye, Mobile Eye, and Hearing Screening, and his diabetes eye screening. For many years, he has served as a committee member of the Lions' Night on the Town fundraising event, helping raise money that supports vision screening of our children's grades K through 12 in local schools, and donations to other local service organizations. He always donated plants to the silent auction annually, gave a Flag Day presentation at the West Covina Elementary School, providing each second-grade student a small flag while teaching them the meaning of the flag and the patriotism. He was a club president in 1981 and 1982. Mario's, excuse me, Mario supported local education. He had participated in the Every 15 Minute Program at West Covina High School and Bishop Amont High School. This program involved the mock death of a high school student aimed at making students accurately aware of dangers of drinking and driving. Mario had donated flowers and/or cash to Every 15 Minutes for many years. He donated carnations to the West Covina High School Renaissance Program, which honors student achievers, and a bouquet to the Teacher of the Year. He also participated in the local middle, high school career fairs, working one-on-one with students who want to learn about florist business. He had helped support medical needs in the West Covina. Mario had been a committee member of the Citrus Valley Health Partners Foundation, annual golf tournament fundraisers for over 20 years. Funds raised at these events helped defray costs of various projects, including the neonatal intensive care unit, pediatric cardiological rehabilitation, the emergency department, and the state-of-the-art MRI equipment. He had given generously of his time and flowers to the seniors and the homebound. Through Lions, he had delivered meals on wheels to seniors and the homebound, previously as a substitute for sick volunteer drivers, and now one day every month. For more than, over 30 years, he had donated one carnation with each meal every Wednesday for the five local routes of his meals on wheels, averaging about 40 carnations weekly. He also provided deeply discounted flowers for Mother's Day and Father's Day at the West Covina Senior Center. Mario was well-known for his generosity in supporting fundraising efforts for local community service organizations to assist in obtaining national exposure for the city of West Covina. He had donated the centerpieces for the West Covina Rose Flow Foundation fundraising events annually since 2005. In addition, he provided floral centerpieces, flowers, and plants in a big discount. Two, the annual YWCA, San Gabriel Valley Women's and Achievement Fundraising Event, which helps support an organization's domestic violence program. Annual event, the annual East Valley Community Health Center fundraising. He had been a member of the Historical Society of West Covina for many years. He also served on the Historical Preservation Archives Committee. He had been a member of the West Covina Beautiful for many years, and was a member of the West Covina Friends of the Library. Mario received the West Covina Lions Club Monarch of the Year Award in 1979 and 1980, and the Lions International Highest Award, the Melvins Jones Fellow Award, in 1993 and 1994. Through Lions, he also received the City of Hope Life Station Award in 2006. He had been named in 1993 Small Business Person of the Year and in 2005 Small Business of the Year. Mario had been a resident of the West Covina for over 50 years. He and his wife Doris Ann have had eight children and six grandchildren. He had been a parishioner of the Sacred Heart Church for over 50 years. Mario said, "None of these contributions could have been done without the support of my wife Doris Ann and my staff." For all that he has given our community through his consistent service efforts and generous floral and cash contribution, Mario Del Fonti is indeed deserving of the honor, and he was a 2011 West Covina Citizen of the Year. Please, Assistant City Clerk, please make a note of this, and please draft a letter of condolence to the family for us.
I will do that, mayor.
Thank you.
And now we're going to move on to the consent calendar.
Okay, what we did before, what we usually do, we usually ask our council members on the consent calendar if there's any items they would like to pull. If not, so we have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Pool number four.
Mayor Pro Tem would like to pull number four?
Do you make a motion to accept that?
Okay, I'm going to start it halfway. Okay, now, do we have, since we're pulling number four, that there's one, two, three, and five left, do we have a motion to accept the rest of the consent calendar?
Move the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We have a roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, it passes 5-0.
Okay, Pro Tem, pool number four, would you like to speak on it?
The reason, the reason you put it number four, the reason she put it number four, okay, and I have an issue regarding, we have to spend the $420,000, okay, for this, okay, the installation. Can we, can we wait, okay, due to, we already, last time, we have a $2.1 million deficit. And now, is this going to go into our reserve? So maybe the assistant city manager can give us some of the explanation.
Yeah, from a staff's perspective, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we would not recommend waiting because it's a public safety item, but I'm going to let Vince Capelli, Assistant Chief, elaborate. He's back behind me, over here. He's already sitting down, yeah. I'm going to allow him to elaborate, but we have concerns because of the aged infrastructure, and basically, it's not being, it's not, the software's no longer supported at this time.
Mayor Pro Tem, before, may I step in just because you're going to answer questions, and I'd like to add one that you'll have to answer anyway? My question is, is there another option? Because we have this one company, I understand piggyback, but is there a different way cities are doing their dispatching for fire? What comes to mind is City of Burbank and Verdugo, so other options were not discussed in our staff report. So if you have any information on that, or just other options in general, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. To answer the first question, Mayor Pro Tem, the answer is yes, I believe it's, funds are going to be removed from the reserve. I think that's what is on the fiscal impact portion of the staff report, if, Assistant Manager, I'm pretty sure, right? Yes. The second question, ma'am, is that we actually are going to do the same thing as Burbank and Verdugo, we're getting the same system as most fire departments are throughout the United States. They've gone to a system like this, which is called a pre-alert, over the last 10 to 12 years, and we're actually behind the eight ball of getting vehicles and boots on the ground out at a quicker, quicker manner. So we'll actually be coming into the modern era of delivering service to the community with getting our responsive vehicles out on a call, to where it'll be done during the time of receiving the call, the dispatcher, when the call taker's getting the information, they will input that into a computer, and the computer-aided dispatch will actually deliver information to the fire stations and to the vehicles, the emergency vehicles that are out on the streets, that there's a call, prior to a person actually pushing a button, alerting them, and prior to them telling them over the radio that they have a call. Burbank is actually getting the exact same system installed right now, US Digital Sign. There's about four or five companies that do this, and some of them are a little more expensive, they're just overpriced. This company is, was really vetted out by a lot of the fire departments and the systems to be the best out there right now for the, for the dollar.
The problem I have solved here is the fiscal, okay, 18 or 19. If we have a system going to be failed, okay, and we should know, okay, beforehand, so we can budget this, now certainly we need to spend this $420,000 that we don't have, and we have to go to our, okay, reserve. That's some, this is the problem I have, okay? This has been, if the system is breaking apart, then we should know, your department should know, okay, we need to, okay, budget this for our future, six months, okay, one year, okay, we need to bid, and this and that. Certainly, this is like last minutes, like every time, so this is a major issue I have. Then now, we already have a $2.1, okay, a million dollars of deficit, and now we have to go to this $420,000. So you have to understand the concern I have is how can we justify to approve, okay, approve this? With the money that we don't have, that never go into our budget, and this is a major purchase, and where this justified to, to our approval?
So for what we have been asking for this type of equipment for multiple years, I think it's been in the CIP, if not last year and the year before.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, if you've been asking, okay, for numerous time, and this is something so important to us, why we didn't budget, okay? Why we didn't budget this, okay, in two hours, okay, the fiscal years of this year? And this is something become a negative, and it's kind of, the feeling I have is like a sandbag, that we, due to the public safety, we have to approve this, we have to dig into our reserve, and this is something I think a bit difficult for our residents to take.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll answer that for you. So the city unfortunately has a lot of things that have been deferred for maintenance. So I think, you know, you can take facilities, you can take vehicles, you can take public safety items. We are now just at a critical mass, and I don't know any other way to explain it, is that I think for a long time, there was this, well, we don't have the funding, so we'll continue to push it down the road, we'll continue to push it down the road, we can, we can continue to put a band-aid on this and a band-aid on that. And unfortunately, now we're at the point where it's no longer being supported. And I don't have a clear answer for you, other than the fact that this item has been brought forward before as part of the CIP package, and through the budget process, it was determined that it would be funded at a later date.
This will be my last question, so I can give my colleague to have a chance to, to ask about their issue, okay, the question. Okay, the problem I have, okay, I think we can do this, okay, I don't care, okay, I don't know how emergency this, we need to do right away, because, okay, we will put a budget, you still need, hold on, you still need a vendor to survey, it takes time, it takes time to, okay, install this system. What my point is, we are, we're not much, okay, so we are going to go to our next budget. So can we wait for the budget, okay, that we can put this rather than dig into our reserve? I really don't want to dig into our reserve. We already dig $2.1 million. So, okay, right now, okay, maybe two months, we start, right now, maybe next month, we're starting doing the budgeting, this and that. We can be find the money someplace, okay, rather than right away digging into our, our reserve. So how do you think as our assistant chief?
I'll try to explain it as best I can of why it's emergent, is the system is starting to fail regularly now, to where the units are not going to get the call, where some of our fire department personnel have been having to actually sit on a radio throughout the night, throughout the day, and wait for a dispatcher to tell them they have a call. It's happened, it's just happening more often. We've done everything we can to try to limp it along, the staff in IT, the staff in dispatch, the staff in the fire department, the stations have done everything they can to just try to keep it running, try to keep it running, knowing that the funds aren't really there. And now we're just at a critical part that we're not, we might not get dispatched for a call, especially if there's multiple calls coming down at the same time. Then if one call is being dispatched, and there's three emergencies going on at the same time, which is pretty regular, two of them are going to get delayed, and it could get delayed for a long period of time. This will take This will take that out of the, out of the equation now completely, because during the call taker's events of putting in the call, the information will go out, there's even possibility, very regularly, that the units will be on scene treating the patients, taking care of the emergency, mitigating it, before the dispatcher even physically alerts the station and says the information over the radio. It's just been failing, and now, it's starting to fail more and more and more. That's why it's become emergent.
It's my understanding that the City of Burbank, in conjunction with a couple of other cities, actually provide a system that other cities contract with them to do the dispatching for. That was just a quick bit of Googling this issue. So I understand that we're going to have the same type of system, but at this point, when $420,000 is a lot, that's why I was curious if there's another option, even if it means contracting for a year, so we can start saving money, planning this improvement versus just automatically installing the system.
Sorry. So actually, the Verdugo system, I can give you a little background, is a dispatching service that happens to the Verdugo cities and the cities that are part of that dispatching system. Each individual city, Pasadena, Burbank, Glendale, Montebello, Vernon, all those cities that get dispatched by Verdugo on that same system, they are required to get their own alerting system, pre-alerting system, and each of those cities have got this system on their own. If you see in the staff report, I actually noted that Burbank just finished contracting to install this system, the pre-alert, into their cities. They do get the Verdugo Dispatch trunking digital system, which is completely different. That's the radio portion of the day-to-day operations, communication between units and dispatch. This is the network-based alerting for the station. Each individual city has, is required to get their own, doesn't come with that package. So even, let's say, for some reason, we decided to dispatch with, contract with Verdugo, we would still be required to get our own alerting system installed in our department. And Downey and Burbank are the, two local cities are actually in contract to have U.S. Digital Design installed in the next coming months.
Thank you.
You know, it's been known that I've disagreed with our fire department on quite a few things. One thing I will not do is put our residents' lives at hand. You know, we have a system that's failing, I've disagreed on other items, but this is a system that fails. You know, it's failing more and more, and I think somewhere down the line, that this bullet has to be bit. We're going to keep kicking the can down the road, I don't want to take a chance on, especially in a load system like this, failing where our fire department does not get their alarm system that's supposed to, so they'd be out there. So I'm willing to say, you know what, tonight, we decided on replacing our city manager with a big tag on that, which most likely is only coming out of our reserve to pay yet. So I don't have a problem taking this item and say, yes, we need to do it, so we're going to have to move forward with it. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with item four?
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. Basically, I'd like to say, I agree with, with our mayor, that, I mean, if it's important to our public safety, we need it, but in terms of what Mayor Protem Wu said, I'd, I'd like to see any kind of imminent, I, I know we've got a lot of pending capital improvement projects, similar to requests I made previously to try to forecast massive imminent liabilities, I'd like to see things like this also at the forefront of imminent liabilities to help us plan a little bit better, because I'm sure there's a lot of them, and maybe we could get a schedule of potential emergencies like this. Thank you.
Okay, another issue I have, okay, I understand, okay, this is the system that Burbank, okay, installed, okay, but the point is this, okay, any of this big item, we need, still need RP, request proposal, okay, and we need, at least three, okay, okay, we, we need to, I know, maybe this is good company, but we still need to, as a procedure, okay, we cannot just say, oh, somebody's doing that, okay, it's $420,000, and we need a public safety, you don't do it, okay, then we don't, we cannot react. I, I, I think this is too, too much of dramatic, okay? What I'm saying is this, as, as you guys already know, the system's failing, you guys should go to the RP, okay, and we, let us know beforehand, and we say, oh, we have this issue, okay, and we send out, we have a warning shot. If you have a system, okay, failing, it's going on, okay, and, okay, rather than right away, okay, today, we have to approve $420,000, okay, in the name of a public safety. So, so, so I really have an issue with this, okay, I, I, I cannot approve tonight unless you can give us a justification, and plus, okay, you give me all the proof, that if we don't do this, okay, we have this and that. Everybody said the same thing, any department, they all have an emergency, urgency, they need to install something. The police department say they need this, and, okay, the fire department, the management to talk about all our computer system, we need to all do this, okay, we approve every time. But, but, but so many times, we approve all, but the same, the, the thing is, is nothing is really to become an urgency, it's just with the convenience to approval. So, so, so on my, my seat, I cannot approve this tonight unless you can provide me the proof, and plus RP, okay, and this is the best for our city to, to install. Thank you.
So the cost, are we getting the best deal, and why aren't there any bids?
So to answer that question, and hopefully help Mayor Protem, is that prior to this, the, last year, the Fire Chief tasked me with looking at other options to try to get money for this. So we did write a grant, which is the Firefighters Grant, to try to get money for this, and we went out and we did talk to four different companies who do this system, and three of the companies were, two of the companies were more, and another one was the same. The one that was the same was in New York and had no other, no other customers here, and didn't do exactly the same offer, didn't offer the same, same stuff. The other two were well, well, well more expensive. Sorry. So just with that, the units could already be responding prior to them talking on the radio, just to show you how it works. There was a complete RFP done by the NPP.gov, if you look in the staff report, we put that in there, that they did extensive outreach to companies that do this service, and companies that do, that offer this product, and after their longtime search, they came up with U.S. Digital Design as the most reliable, reliable and cost-effective company for fire departments to do it. If you look in your staff report, it's in the section, apologize, I can get it, bottom page two, thank you. Yes, the attachment number two is from the NPP.gov Master Price Agreement Contract, and it's also the Public Procurement Authority notice that they went out to RFP, and throughout the RFP, only one other company, WestNet, came back with the bid for this. So an extensive RFP was done, that's more stringent and more in-depth than a RFP that we'd have done here per our purchasing policy within the City of West Covina. So an RFP was done through this cooperative agreement, the NPP.gov. I hope I was able to answer your question.
I do have more, Mayor Johnson. You know, I understand the need for this, and I understand Mayor Protem Wu and Councilman Castellanos' frustration here, because just two weeks ago, we were here with a budget amendment for $2.1 million. And none of the documentation that I received, did it say, by the way, we have a failing system, so there may be $420,000 in two weeks? And by all accounts, we knew that we had a failing system. And I understand why it's urgent and why it needs to happen now, and I will second it for that reason, but we really need to work on ways to stop this, because this is $2.5 million of an $11 million reserve that we know is gone now. That's before we even talk about budget deficits and everything else we have going on. We can't afford this. Mayor Johnson, I am glad to hear that you are finished kicking the can down the road, because that's why we're in this position. The can has been kicked down, and I'm glad we now have a council that doesn't want this to continue, and will take appropriate action, albeit reluctantly for the simple fact that eventually, the ATM will run out of money, and we're very, very, very close to that.
Thank you. I have one last comment, you know, and I do believe that what the action we take tonight, well, I do believe we'll save a life, because when we have a system that is failing, and yes, and I do agree with Councilmember Shoemaker, we have to make a better effort at letting the council understand. You know, sometimes it takes a stick, it's someone upside the head to get their attention. And if that's what it takes to get our attention on our, on our failing system, or something that, that, it make it, we have to make it really important to say, you know what, this is it. This is what we need, there's no guesswork to it. If we don't get it, this is what's going to happen. So I think in the future, I do agree with her, that we have to make it better known to the council and to the residents why we are making these decisions. Okay, I have a motion in a second, is there any other comment? Okay, we have roll call?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
It passes 4-1. And that is the end of the consent calendar? No, no, I should finish it, I'm almost done. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so what we have, we have one, I'll let you read it, I'm going to let, or Mayor read this.
We have a request from Councilman Dario Castellanos requesting the city council's considerations to have city staff contact Southern California Edison to determine costs and benefits of converting streetlights to LED.
Mayor Johnson, number six.
Number six, number six.
Did I skip one?
Yes.
See what happens? I got, I got another mayor here, I saw you, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So Department Head Contract Survey, it is recommended that the city council institute a process where the city manager provides courtesy notice to city council prior to making an employment offer to any new department head.
Whose report was this? Was that yours? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd like to make an amendment to the language of, of what it says. I wasn't, I wasn't seeking courtesy notice, I wanted council approval of, of potential candidates. So if we could amend that, were we going to get a report on this, or?
The Human Resources Director, Edward Macias, would be giving that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, members of the public, and city staff. Per Councilmember Castellanos' request on December 18th, staff did conduct a survey regarding department head contracts. That survey involved really reaching out to well more than 38 cities. We did make contact and receive a response from 38 cities. And really, we bifurcated the report in terms of those cities that actually provide some semblance of contracts for their department heads, and then those cities that do not do that. There is a little bit of difference between each of the cities, there are nuances, but in general, they either do some semblance of contracting, or they don't. So the findings of the survey showed that of the 38 cities, we're reasonably confident that 11 of them do some semblance of contracting, or that they do provide the department head candidates for review with the city council on some level. So for example, San Marino does allow the city manager to make a recommended appointment, but that appointment is contingent upon the concurrence of the city council in that city. For those cities that do not do a, a, a procedure like that, or have employment contracts for their department heads, we found that, I believe it's, 27 cities do not fall under that method or procedure. With one caveat, we did find with the City of Torrance, the finance director is appointed by the city council as well as the city manager. Really, the summary of findings really indicates that most cities, whether they provide or require an employment contract or not, most cities still adhere to an approved schedule of salaries and benefits for their department heads, mid-management, and general employees. And what we found is that, for the most part, whether a city contracts their department heads or not, the employment contracts generally reiterate what those salary resolutions already We do highlight some advantages and disadvantages of the employment contracts. The advantages would be that employment contracts may offer city councils the opportunity to review the experience, credentials, and agreed upon starting salaries of prospective department heads before an appointment is made by the city manager. Essentially, the employment contract provides the city council with the opportunity to review prospective candidates before a hiring decision is made. Another advantage is that contracts may provide the prospective department head some semblance of a severance package and/or even a signing package, a signing bonus or a severance package contingent upon the employment contract. So we can look at those being as, as advantages of the employment contract. The disadvantages of, of employment contracts that we found are that they do introduce the potential to provide compensation and benefits outside of the council, what the council has already approved via resolution. This could lead to internal concerns of equity and fairness, even ethics, in terms of having different compensation packages for department heads that really do share commensurate executive duties and responsibilities. Another disadvantage that we noted is that employment contracts may weaken the internal controls of administration due to the precedent they set for providing different pay and benefits to employees within these commensurate job classification. And what I mean by internal controls is, is it may lend itself to really providing just significantly different employment benefits and compensation for really like positions. Another disadvantage that we, that we noted is requiring an individual employment contract for department heads introduces the possibility that appointments to the, the department head positions will be subjected to the political process, thus violating the founding principle of the council-manager form of governance, which is to appoint and hold one executive, i.e. the city manager, accountable for the operations and performance of the organization. This politic, this potential politicizing of the executive team undermines, undermines the, the city manager's span of influence and ability to effectively manage the organization. Moreover, we note that this politicization weakens the council's ability to hold the city manager directly accountable for organizational performance if the executive team is politically appointed via council approval by employment contracts. And so in sense, what we're really trying to say is, it's probably, it's already a task to hold one individual accountable for the, for the performance of the organization, it's going to become exponentially more difficult to hold those accountable for the performance of the organization when we have more than one politically-appointed executive position. The potential politics of department head positions through individual employment contracts weakens the internal controls of the organization. And what I mean by that is, by going to, to this type of model, it does introduce itself to diminishing, diminishing the recruitment process, which is vitally important in a public setting and in a public sector organization. So what we want to really maintain is, we want to maintain the integrity of the recruitment process, so that it's unbiased, it's objective, and that it yields the most quality. process so that it's unbiased, it's objective, and that it yields the most qualified applicants for the organization. And we see the potential by introducing employment contracts, and by way of that, potentially introducing the politics of that, it may erode and may diminish the importance of what is the recruitment process in a public organization such as ours. And then the last point that we make in terms of the disadvantages are that it does add administrative costs associated with the time used for negotiating, reviewing, and acquiring approval of the employment contract. We did develop some alternatives to employment contracts. The alternative to requiring employment contracts for each department head is to really establish a process where the city manager presents the city council with his or her choice for an open department head position prior to making the final appointment, such as the original recommendation. This process helps mitigate the potential disadvantages associated with having department heads enter into individual employment contracts, while at the same time providing the council with an opportunity to review the process, to review the city manager's choice before a final appointment is made. Most importantly, it should be noted that this process maintains the fundamental principle of the council-manager form of governance and keeps the salaries and benefits for department heads equitable and in line with the salary and benefits that have already been established via resolution, council resolution. It should also be noted that this hybrid of the traditional appointment process for department heads addresses both the advantages and disadvantages associated with having department heads enter into individual employment contracts with the city and by extension with the city council. And it's also noted that if the council does want to reform this and go to a more council-appointed process for department heads, that will require a code amendment. So I just wanted to also note that. With that being said, there are other options to this. As we noted earlier, option number one, which is staff's recommendation, is to institute a process where the city manager provides courtesy notice to the city council prior to making an employment offer to any new department head. There is option two that you may pursue, which is to institute a process where the city manager selects the new department head and provides the proposed employment contract for the city council's ratification. There's option three, which would be to institute a process where the city council selects and negotiates the employment contract for the new department head. Option four, receive and file this report. And then option five, provide alternative direction.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Well, I don't like any of the potential options listed here, and I'm fine with a code amendment. You did mention that the potential change here might erode accountability, but based on the $420,000 item we had today and the recent $2.1 million, I think we need to try something new. So my recommendation would be like San Marino to have majority approval by council and no contracts if possible. I never wanted the word "contract" to be in there. So I'd like to hear from my fellow council members.
Yeah, I have a problem with contract too, okay. The size, okay, see, contract, I think most of our head of department is at will. Am I right?
That is correct. Department heads are at-will employees.
So in that way, okay, my suggestion is, okay, still continues at will, okay, of when, when the, okay, city managers, they find the person in the key person, the head of a department, okay, they should prepare this person, and then maybe, I don't know, this is what, okay, Councilman Castellanos requests is, they bring it to us, so at least we know who they are. Okay, currently, we have no idea, okay? We have no idea who, okay, and our city manager hired. We don't see the resume, we don't know the person, we just get informed. We just say, person get hired. And so I think accountability is, okay, like Councilman Castellanos stated, okay, at least, okay, I don't know, it's on my seat, okay? I feel like this is, they should bring it, who is going to hire? We have this vacancy, okay? And he going to hire this person, and this is resume? And then show to the council, and then we review it, okay? And the majority approve, and then he or she hire. So at least we kind of represent the taxpayer, since all you guys' salaries paid by the taxpayer, and we represent the taxpayer, we should have some, at least, kind of a review if this person is qualified or not. This is what my see on this suggestion, on this, okay, agenda, okay? At least, okay, the majority of the city council, okay? And then when we hire a city manager that we trust, I don't think we will have, okay, against, okay, the person, okay, he's going to hire the person he, he or she, okay, and hire. But again, okay, my sees to see this is basically, is this person, he or she get hired, at least we know the resume, know who this person, and in that way, okay, for example, you, you, okay, we have a new director, okay, something, at least we know who they are and what kind of qualification. So in that way, in this, much safer at the same time to protect the city.
So if I can clarify or ask the question for clarification, it sounds like you're asking for a courtesy notification prior to employment. However, what you said was that the council would be voting, and therefore the council would be determining, determining department heads getting hired.
Okay, but the person, okay, be hired is from the city manager. City manager hire the person, we don't do the selection, we don't do the, okay, that's, again, this is based on this agenda, what I see.
To me, that sounds like you're recommending option two? Okay.
Minus the word "contract"?
So the city manager, so under two, the city manager would make a recommended selection, present that one individual to you, you interview, vote yes or no.
Correct. I think this, at least, the city manager, he's a full-time job, he goes to find the person that we work for, for him or for her, okay? And she's, okay, he or she can do this job, okay? And then we see the resume, and we concur based on, so we represent the taxpayer. So in that way, we kind of stand behind the city manager together, that this is qualified person. Okay, I think this is much more, okay, and around, okay, than currently, we have no idea who the city manager hired. So in that way, I think it's much safer, but again, the election is by the city manager. City manager go to search, find the right person from the HR. So HR, you guys do your job, okay? And then city managers find the person, negotiate, and see if it's good, and bring to our attention. I don't know if this is agreeable for our council colleague, okay? My preference would be the number two, okay? Still let the full-time CEO to do this job, but at least bring back to, when he or she finds somebody, and bring it to us, and then we approve as a majority.
Let me hopefully simplify this a little bit. Okay? Because somehow, school districts manage to do this. The school board is required to hire the superintendent. He is the school board's only employee. The only employee we evaluate. But general custom is, with directors, assistant superintendents, they will come into closed session, say, this is the person's resume, this is the person I want to hire. Then the school board says, yes, no, it's your choice. And then the next step is, the person's offered the position, and the school boards ratify it, but they have contracts, which you guys aren't interested in here, which is fine. But what happens after that is, once they're hired, yes, we still keep voting on their contracts. But the general policy is, these are the superintendent's employees. In this case, it would be the city manager's employees. So if the directors in the city aren't doing their jobs correctly, where it shows up is on the city manager's evaluation, because he's our employee. And that's what I think you guys are looking for here, where before somebody is hired, it's the city manager's choice, but that we get, hey, this is the person I want to hire. And that way, if any of us knows of the person, or knows, it just says, no, this person isn't going to work, this isn't the background we think belongs in this type of position, then you have that before the person's been offered a job, before that person comes into a hostile council with marks against them already. But unless it's something outrageous that somebody knows, the general process will be, we trust based on what we see here, that you've done your due diligence, and ultimately it's your employee, and you're going to answer for the employee. So I don't think at all, when you say it undermines the city manager's authority, I just find that absolutely ridiculous, because ultimately, the buck stops with the city manager. And that's who we evaluate. And so if his departments aren't doing something, or her departments aren't doing something, the city manager is who the city council holds accountable, and it will be the city manager's job to hold their department heads accountable.
Believe it or not, I really do agree with Councilmember Shoemaker on most of it. You know, I do believe that, yes, I get mixed signals from a couple of the council members here. Yes, we want a city manager that we can trust, we trust their ability to hire the right people. But no, we don't trust them to hire somebody without us ratifying it. That's two things. If we don't trust, hire a city manager that we trust, we've talked to and we trusted them, that they don't do the job, we should trust them with the ability to hire the right people for the job. Yes, I do not have a problem with us being notified for courtesy, to say, and like Councilmember Shoemaker said, yes, if we happen to know who that person is, we know from maybe another city they worked at, that there was a problem, there's someone on the way, do we want that person? No, I do agree with that. So I do agree with, yes, it's the city manager's job to hire and fire anybody that works below them. It's our job as a city council to hire and fire the city manager, or hire and fire the city attorney. We can't take all of the control out of the city manager. Why are we trusting them? Why are we hiring somebody that we say, after we talk to them, and say, we trust you to run our city, but we don't trust you to be responsible for hiring the right people in those department heads? So as part, I would agree that, yes, I don't see a problem with the council being notified before that person is hired, that we can maybe have a talk with them if we want to. But the ultimate has to be for the city manager to hire them. We have to trust our city manager to hire the right people. And I can see some of the things that this council has some problems with, and I don't have a problem with that, but I think we should trust our city manager, whoever's up there, to make the right decisions. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I mean, I agree with some parts of that. I think that if we didn't have the surprises we've been having, this wouldn't be on my mind. So until systematic problems of that nature are eliminated, my view is we need this.
Well, my end is the accountability. So it's similar to chain of command. So if the issue's there, and that person going from the chain, and they're not doing a good job, I mean, that is simply just having that person be accountable for going, moving forward. But I do agree with you, Councilmember Jessica, and thank you.
I think with all of this discussion, I'm going to just try and cut it short, and say that I will move option two with the language change that, it basically says, institute a process where the city manager selects the new department heads and provides the selection for city council's ratification. So the only new step will be that it comes to us in closed session, and on an open session agenda, we vote on the appointment. We're not going to have a contract, anything like that, just a very simple yes or no.
If I may amend the motion, it would be to recommend that, to direct the city attorney to return with a future amendment to amend the code to accomplish those goals.
Okay, I have a question. And how about at-will or contract? I can support, okay, I would second, okay, her motion, okay? But the point is, okay, I do not want contract, okay, I want at-will.
And that's what my motion is.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the suggestion by the city attorney.
Who is the second?
I'm the second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
It passes 5-0. Now we should go to number seven. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, we have to do this real fast, we have a mother may I by Councilmember Castellanos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My request here is just to get city staff to contact Southern California Edison and determine the costs and benefits and process of converting our streetlights to LED. As we drive throughout the city, we see a combination of yellow lights and LED lights. I think it's common knowledge that LED lights are much better cost-wise and also lighting. So that's why I'd like to direct city staff to look into this. Any questions? Any comments? Okay.
No, that's just a mother may I to come back?
No, we have to approve, right?
Yeah, but you get consensus.
Okay, we have a consensus here, we have any? Okay, we have one more real fast, mother may I by Councilwoman Lopez, she'd like to have a vote further, Council.
I just wanted to request a, the community street cleanup with partnership, and I know I sent a few emails, but we can go forward from there.
Aye.
I second.
It's a mother may I, we don't talk about, yeah.
Okay, last mother may I. Mr. Kaufman brought up a very valid concern. Can we research what we can do to possibly help offset the cost for seniors and students for the right chair? If it's through grants, through funding that is only earmarked for certain things? There may not be a way, but can we at least explore how to do it?
Okay, that's our last mother may I, we are adjourned.
I second.